It is 7 o'clock, Chapter 231, PL 1975. The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing the lury and filing of this notice on April 20th, 2020. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Korean news, the Echo Sentinel and TAP Doorn and filed with the township clerk of the township forum, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Could you please join me in the pledge of elections and rise? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mr. Bellish?
Yeah.
Mr. Bishi? Mr. Brazee?
Here.
Mrs. Chu? Mrs. DiMaggio? Mrs. DiMaggio? Excuse me, Mrs. DiMaggio?
I can see her, but...
I just received a text from Mrs. DiMaggio, she says she cannot hear.
It looks like Mrs. DiMaggio logged off, I'll come back to her again. Mr. Franco? Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Zahn?
Here.
Mr. Bellman?
Here.
And Mrs. DiMaggio?
I think Mr. Bishi joined us as well.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes, here, a little bit late.
Let's give 30 seconds to Mr. DiMaggio, otherwise we'll move on with Agenda Item 4. Moving on, Chapter 53 requires Boards of Education to permit the public to comment on any changes or amendments to certain administrative contacts as they are renewed. Tonight, we are permitting public comment on the proposed amendment on the contract of our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Mingle. The Board will be voting to amend Dr. Mingle's current contract as well as approve a new contract for 2020, 2025. There was a chance to review the contracts on our webpage of the Board of Education. I invite the public to post any comments to these contracts. If you want to contribute, please send us a message in the chat or raise your hand. Zoom has a raise your hand feature that you can use to indicate that you want to comment on that. Dr. Mingle, can you see anybody raising the hand?
There are not any right now, no.
I'll give it another minute, or please update the chat if the public wants to contribute with feedback. I see nothing in the chat, Dr. Mingle, was there anybody raising the hand?
No hands and there's no private messages in the chat either.
With that, I make a motion to close the public hearing on the superintendent contract.
Second. Could you please say your name when you second?
Patricia Zahn, second.
Thank you, Mrs. Zahn. Mr. Bellish? The motion is to close the hearing.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes, sorry.
Mr. Brazee?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio, can you hear us yet? Unmute, please, Mrs. DiMaggio?
Is that better?
It is, thank you. Do you vote yet?
So, yes, I'm here, can you mark me that I abstained, did we do the minutes yet from last meeting?
We haven't gotten there yet, this is the hearing on Dr. Mingle's contract.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries to close the hearing.
Motion, resolve that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the April 13th, 2020 Board Meeting.
Do I have a second?
Mr. Brazee will second that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brazee?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Abstaining.
Thank you, Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle?
Yes, the Board received correspondence, which was a notification of construction, which, through which a project could have impact on a wetlands area that's on school property, that's the only correspondence and information.
Thank you. Moving on to present remarks. Welcome to today's virtual meeting, virtual meeting number three, and I'm really glad that we are able to have the public join us now consistently in our board meetings through Zoom. After two virtual meetings with an abbreviated agenda, our agenda today is back to normal, as I promised you in the last meeting, so you can see that it's quite long. I want to especially highlight Agenda Item 11, which is the 2020-2021 budget. While the preliminary budget aimed at a moderate 1.24% tax rate increase, our Board revisited the budget in the current light of the COVID-19 crisis. We want to do our part and minimize the burden on our community members. Due to this, the Finance Committee, led by Mr. Brazee and the administration, worked together to alter the budget and change the tax rate increase to 0% for the upcoming budget. In these times of economic uncertainties, we felt that this was the right thing to do for our community. I'm also looking forward to Agenda Item 17, where we discuss more about the flexible instruction days. I always appreciate any information on that topic that we receive from our administration, and I'm sure that the public enjoys that as well. You might be aware that our governor made a statement this morning that, and I quote here, "There is a chance that schools will open before the end of the term in June." So I'm really looking forward to any update that I can get from our administration, what our district does. I also want to congratulate the Warren Middle School Band on being selected as the finalist in the 2020 Marching Scarlet Knights Battle of the Band Competition. Please vote for them, the link is in Dr. Mingle's updates on the bottom, and right now, we are so tied behind #1 Hillsborough, so please help us to become #1. And last, I want to ask every parent to fill out the weekly survey sent by the administration. This feedback is really crucial for our administration and help address the issues that are brought forward by a majority of our parents and students. Thank you very much, over to Dr. Mingle for the updates from the Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman, just a couple of things, I wanted to mention that there is an Agenda Item added today, let me get the exact number for you. Item number C8, Supplemental After-School Activities in Clubs. The Board has the details in their updated packets today, but that is an approval of over 20 new clubs that will be available to students starting next Monday across all five schools, so this actually, in the COVID-19 environment, gives us an opportunity to do something we've been wanting to do for a while, which is offer cross-school opportunities for enrichment, so very proud of our teaching staff that came up with less than 48 hours' notice, some really creative, interesting ideas. Details about that will go out to the parents of all students tomorrow, assuming we have Board approval tonight, of course, so I'm excited about that. I wanted to mention that at our next scheduled meeting, which is May 11th, we will have presentations from the Strategic Planning Action Teams with the recommended strategic plan goals to the Board, so that information is already kind of out there for the Board, but we will have video presentations from each of the action teams to give a little bit more information about what is entailed with the strategic plan recommendations. I also wanted to encourage people to vote for the middle school band, obviously we have no idea what will come in the fall, exactly as far as how activities and college football will roll out, but we want our middle school to be the one that's on the field with the Rutgers marching band, and the school that's just ahead of us has three or four times the number of students, so we really need everybody to vote, you're allowed to vote twice a day from every IP address you have, so please make sure you keep supporting the Warren Middle School Band, and if it's okay, Mr. Bellman, if I can make a comment after the action agenda about the contracts, I would appreciate that opportunity as well.
Sure.
Thank you. And obviously, I'll talk more about flexible instruction during the new business section.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle, let me follow in our agenda where we are, I'm sorry for that. Present superintendents' remarks, Q3 Board and District Goals Update.
Sorry, I forgot to include that there, so we provided more details to the full Board, but the biggest goal we've been working on in the last quarter was getting the strategic plan from community input, which is where it was the last time we talked about it, to the place where we're comfortable with the recommendations. Thanks to the ad hoc committee, the work of the chairpeople, we've come a long way with the strategic plan recommendation, we've shared sort of the 30,000-foot view with the public through last month's first Friday newsletter, and that'll be the big thing for the Board to consider at its next meeting, which will guide our work moving forward. As I mentioned in our last regularly scheduled board meeting, we've put into practice some of the ideas that are contained within the strategic plan recommendations in terms of how we're surveying parents and staff right now, how we're using that survey information to make decisions, trying to give voice, and I'll talk more about that in the flexible instruction days as well, including the working groups we have going on. So that's really the biggest goal as far as the public side of Quarter 3, I think that's it, Mr. Bellman.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. Presentation, as I already highlighted, we have a change in the budget, and as I understand, there's a pre-recorded presentation. Mrs. Leonard, could you please?
So I'm going to get that started, and I'm going to start it off by saying this will be the first time I've done it with an audience, so here we go.
Good evening, this is the final 2020-2021 budget presentation, I'll be walking us through some overview comments and then turning it over to Mrs. Lenhart for the financial details. Thank you to Mr. Brazee, Chair of the Finance Committee, as well as members, Mr. Bellman, Mr. Bellish and Mrs. Zahn, and especially to School Business Administrator, Mrs. Lenhart, and her team in the Finance Office of the District. The development of a budget of the magnitude of the Warren Township School District takes place over the course of pretty much the entire school year, beginning right after we come back in September, really taking stride around January, when the Finance Committee reviews the first draft and then starts working towards a tentative budget adoption, which took place this year in early March. Typically in Warren, there is very little change from the tentative budget to the final budget over that six, seven, eight weeks, however, that is not the case this year, and Mrs. Lenhart will speak to that in just a second. As a reminder, we work diligently to find deficiencies in our operations, some examples on the screen here, such as how we share staff across schools, manage our transportation services, work to develop in-house special education programs, and so on. In addition, we try to increase budget revenues outside of our local tax levy as much as possible, the biggest increase to that this year is the state aid increase, as you can see noted on the slide, although I'll talk about that more in just a second. Back in 2010-11, Warren Township and pretty much all districts in the state lost significant amount of state aid, in our case, it was from a little over $2 million to zero in one year. We have seen a steady increase in state aid over the last three or four years, as the state funding formula has been implemented on a gradual plan. As far as the Department of Education is concerned, we have been told to continue budgeting for next year with these numbers in mind, however, we have some concerns about the state's ability to meet the obligations stated here due to the COVID-19 crisis and the impact on state tax revenues. With that in mind, the Finance Committee and administration worked hard over the last several weeks to make changes to the 2020-2021 budget in such a way that we could prepare for the potential impact on our taxpayers who are living in very uncertain financial times themselves, and so we have made significant changes to the 2020-2021 budget finances in a way that we believe protect our programs and our student experience while also respectfully and responsibly responding to the fiscal situation created by COVID-19. With that, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Lenhart to go through those details.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle, it is a pleasure to open the financial portion of the budget presentation by announcing that, as you can see, the Board of Education's budget for the 2020-21 school year contains no tax levy increase. What was the extent of the Board's ability to raise taxes that it didn't exercise? Based on the prior three years of accumulative tax levy, which did not utilize all of its capacity, when building the 2021 budget, the Board would have been able to tap into over $1.5 million in banked cap. In addition, the Board's ability to grow the tax levy by 2% would have allowed it an additional $823,000 more. When reviewing a district's proposed budget, it is usually helpful to place it in context of the prior year's budget, however, for this year only, that is not a valuable metric. The reason is that this year's total budget of over $48 million is artificially inflated by $4.3 million, which represents the withdrawal from Capital Reserve to pay the district's no-tax-levy-increase bond note, which is due in July of 20. Please note that these monies did not affect the tax levy and that over $2 million of the no-payment will come from the state. Where are the budget dollars spent? This pie-tart is a clear illustration of the fact that the largest portion of the general operating budget, 82%, is spent on salary and benefits. While you might automatically think of benefits as health insurance, it is important to remember that this category includes a wide range of benefits, including but not limited to legally mandated workman's comp insurance, the employer portion of Social Security for non-certificated staff, as well as a variety of small employee-related cost. When reviewing the tax levy increase of $0, it is interesting to note that salaries increased almost $600,000. This means that by generating increased revenues and decreasing costs, the district was able to absorb more than half a million dollars in salary increases without a corresponding tax levy increase. Please note that the tax levy for a homeowner is based on the interconnectivity of three factors. The first, the dollar amount of the tax levy, is the only one within the Board of Education's control. The other two factors are the value of the average assessed residence and the total assessed value of the township. As the value of the average assessed residence remained basically steady, increasing by $95, the overall assessed value of the township did decrease by 1.35%. Therefore, even with a flat tax levy, the homeowner of a residence valued at the township's average will see a $92 per year increase. I will end the financial portion of this presentation with a historical view of the total taxes for the Warren Township School District. Note that for the budget year shown here, 2015-16 to 2020-21, the total six-year tax levy increase has only been 5.4% or 1.1% average per year.
Thank you, Mrs. Lenhart, as you can see, the goals of the Finance Committee, the administration, and the full Board are to ensure that we are meeting the mission of the Warren Township School District, that you can see on the screen here. We believe that the final budget as presented does just that in a way that is respectful of our taxpayers and provides for the future of not only the student experience, but also the financial well-being of the community. Thank you for your time and attention, we'll be happy to take questions from Board and hear public comment as well.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard and Dr. Mingle. At that time, we're moving into discussion, if any of the Board members want to contribute, please unmute yourself and let me know. Mrs. Chu?
Yeah, I was just wondering, with the state money, like with a lot of unknowns with the state money, are there, do we have contingency plans in our budget if a portion or all of the state funds are not available?
Mr. Bellman, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, Mr. Mingle, please, yes.
I can jump into if she would like, but in years where they've made changes to state aid in the past, they also give the opportunity to open the budget and make an amendment to the budget, so if that were to happen, the Board would make considerations of its options at that point.
And to answer Mrs. Chu's question, yes, we've already begun discussing it, I have some documents set aside already and we're ready, should it come to that.
It'd be helpful just to, for everyone to understand how we're absorbing the increase in salaries, the nearly $600,000 you pointed out in the presentation, it'd just be helpful to understand how exactly we're doing that with no tax levy increase, with no budget increase.
So there are a couple of things, I'll jump in first and again turn it over to Mrs. Lenhart, but one, increased state aid, which was in the presentation makes up a portion of it, two, we had monies set aside for a Capital Reserve deposit that had been moved from that to operating to give us more flexibility, and three, careful look at budgeted expenses for next year's budget that we can pull out of next year's budget, either because of a change in parity or because savings we have right now while we're not operating the same way will allow us to buy those things in the 2019-20 year where allowed. Thank you.
Any further comment from the Board members or questions? I'll wait another 30 seconds if somebody puts a question. Seeing none, moving on to committee reports, do we have committee reports? Mr. Franco, first.
Yep, so the Personnel Committee, we actually met just before this meeting, we also had a meeting on April 16th with the WTEA, where we, I believe, made further progress, we have another meeting scheduled in about two weeks' time, and I think our expectation anyway is to finalize negotiations at that meeting. If anyone on the Board would like further details on where we stand on negotiations, have to do offline.
Thank you very much, Mr. Franco, Mr. Brazee, I saw raising your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bellman, so the Finance Operations and Security Committee met on Monday, April 20th at 6:30 PM, I think you've already heard the proposed draft budget that we came up with, so after these couple important announcements, I'll get to that. First item that we discussed was the operational and finance effects of COVID-19 on the district, there's been a number of, I guess, internal and external influencers on this, including legislation that was signed into law by the Governor S2337 that in part requires some payments continue to be made for vendors, for example. As we heard in the presentation by Dr. Mingle and Mrs. Leonard, there's a little bit of financial uncertainty in terms of the state, and I think that's probably justified, the state also has extended their fiscal year from June 30th to September 30th, so a little bit of play influx there, so we're trying to accommodate all of this and keep all of our options opens in terms of what this thing looks like moving forward. COVID-19 also has had an impact to some of the planned projects, just one example of that is the window project at Central School, in fact, the window factory was shut down due to COVID-19, so that's certainly going to impact timelines on that, so more to come on a lot of these, I know the staff is continuing to work on that, Mrs. Leonard and her team is, you know, following up quite regularly on those. Another item that we spoke of was the NJ SBA Resolution, we had talked about this a little bit in our previous public meeting, you'll see the revised version as Item B9 on tonight's agenda, and the Finance Committee recommends moving forward with that resolution. And we talked about the budget, certainly we're heard of the 0% increase that was spoken of in Mr. Bellman in your remarks, as well as Dr. Mingle and Mrs. Leonard's presentation, so I think that was, I don't, I couldn't possibly add anything more to that. Another item that we added was the, or spoke of, speak of it every, Finance Media and Capital Improvement Plan, and we're going to revisit that again in our next meeting on May 4th of 2020. I think that is all the updates I had for finance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brazee, public commentary, this is the first section of public commentary, this is on Agenda Items only, and I want to highlight that at the end of the meeting, we have another public commentary section, which is right after the flexible instruction days. If there is feedback on the flexible instruction days, I would propose to ask that at the end, as those questions might have already been answered, otherwise, we're happy to discuss these at the end. Otherwise, if there is public commentary, please raise your hand, put anything in the chat, and you have three minutes, please state your name and address. Dr. Mingle, anybody raising the hand?
Not yet, no.
I'll give it another 30 seconds. I see nothing on the chat, Dr. Mingle, anyway, I assume that comments will come later. With that, moving on to the items for Board consideration, does any member want to either discuss one of the agenda items or pull out an item for a separate vote? Please unmute yourself and know. I see nobody interested in a special discussion or a pull-out vote. Mrs. Stone, could you please?
Certainly, move the approval of Agenda Items A1 through A4, B1 through B10, and C1 through C8.
Do I have a second?
A second, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brazee?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu? Mrs. Chu?
Can you hear me?
Okay, thank you. Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Franco? Mr. Franco? Thank you. Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Unfinished business, there was none, coming to new business, flexible instruction days. Dr. Mingle?
Yes, thank you, so first, the comment on the agenda items, I just want to thank the Board for its support in extending and approving a new contract, thank you to Mr. Brazee and Mr. Bellman, we started that discussion Thank you to Mr. Breezy and Mr. Bowman. We started that discussion last fall. We postponed voting on it so that we weren't in the midst of COVID nineteen. Unfortunately, it turned out we were going to be in the midst of it for a while. You know, I appreciate the support, and as I've said to the staff, to at least to the leadership team when we talked about it was we're adopting a new strategic plan that will take us to twenty twenty five. And so I think it's nice to commit on all of our sides to doing that together. So I'm very happy to for the support. On the flexible instruction day topics, just to, I want to say there's just a few things, but I'm looking at a bulleted list of about twenty five items. I'm not going to go through them one by one. But I did want to make sure, so obviously from a parental perspective, the number one priority is what is the experience my child is having each day during the flexible instruction model? I think we've worked really hard to make sure our communications are consistent and that we're getting a lot of information out, and the Friday newsletter especially, when we ask for feedback, is really important. I'm happy to say that since our last meeting two weeks ago, we've seen the participation rate increase significantly, which is really wonderful. I think last weekend, we were somewhere around twenty one, twenty two percent participation, which in our world is extremely high. So I know in some worlds, twenty percent participation seems low on a survey, but twenty percent of parents taking the time, especially given the current circumstances, to give feedback is really nice. And the analysis that takes place by the administrative team is down to the individual student. So at four o'clock this afternoon, we had principals calling houses to respond to concerns parents might have put in their survey, even though they submitted it late, just to make sure we were getting on top of that situation. So I appreciate all the feedback. We try to report some of that back out immediately in the next update on Monday, and then in more detail on my video update on Friday. This week is, anybody who doesn't already have synchronous opportunities in place, they will be in place by Thursday. And the feedback in the initial rollout last week suggests a huge benefit, obviously, from a parental perspective of those experiences. Interestingly, we surveyed our students at the middle school for the first time last week. They weren't as interested or concerned about the synchronous video. They didn't comment on it in either direction. What that means, I don't exactly know yet, but certainly we got a lot of positive feedback from parents in the places where that was rolled out last week, and I'm sure we'll see the same thing when it's finished being rolled out this week. So I'm excited about that. That also includes one-on-one and small group therapy. So for parents who don't have kids who receive things like speech services or occupational therapy, this may not seem like a big deal, but the loss of those services is significant to those families, and that will all be rolling out as well. So that's been happening in asynchronous ways, but there are opportunities now for increasing that in synchronous ways as well. Other topics that we're talking about and that we'll start communicating about, some of them are dependent on the governor's ultimate decision. So he made the comment this morning about maybe there's a possibility we can get back in before the end of the year. So we basically have to leave open the possibility of planning for a September return or a sooner return. And so we have administrative working groups. I'm just going to redo the list of working groups that are going on behind the scenes so everybody's aware. We have groups on the pre-K moving up ceremony, kindergarten registration and orientation readiness testing, kindergarten end of year ceremony, the grade five event, grade five moving up ceremony, grade eight graduation, a virtual field day for all five schools, the fifth grade capstone, the eighth grade capstone, planning for reopening, whenever that might be, the logistics of collecting materials that students need to bring back to us, the logistics of us giving materials back to students that we have of theirs, summer fund and extended school year, as well as academic support that takes place over the summer. Those are all the, those are individual groups. In addition to that, we have a team working right now on a plan that will allow us next week to do a pickup for all kindergarten, first and second grade parents so that they can get the next level of paper-based math materials for their kids, as well as some other things. We have the employee community and student surveys that go on each week. We have started the process of hiring. We have multiple staff member retirements that we're replacing, and so we have a hiring process going on. We've, as of today, we're starting the sports physicals process for the fall at the middle school. We have all kinds of medication that is in storage for students who usually get medication in school that we have to work through a process for returning. We have final decisions and communications to make on the seventh and eighth grade overnight trips. We are launching new after-school activities, and we have discussions to do about things like our end-of-the-year celebration of our excellence in education recipients and our students, especially at the middle school. So that's the list of the things. Never mind, obviously, the context that goes behind that. Our goal with each item is to prioritize and triage. So you heard me talking in two weeks ago or four weeks ago, the last time we met before that, and it was at the very surface level of how do we make sure everybody has a computer and access and devices? All of that is still true. Every day, we have replacement computers going out to families who need it and that. We're still feeding families that need access to food. We're still responding to concerns about technology and that sort of thing. But then it's up to the next level of how do we make these decisions for the best interest of students? How do we think about what is becoming a growing concern of students who report feeling isolated? So you hear their phrasing for adult as well about social distancing, not social isolation. We've seen the responses in parent surveys and student surveys start to shift a little bit, where it used to be, we want more interaction, and now it's, my child misses their teachers or their, their friends, which is a little bit different. And so our counselors are working on that, as well as our school nurses. As I said at the, at the top, synchronous learning opportunities will be in place if they're not already by Thursday. But our model is an asynchronous first model with synchronous support for students, and we're working through those details, and we'll continue communicating about them. I think that's a pretty big overview. I'm happy to take questions from the board and then from the public, and I'll go into more detail on the topics that people have interest in.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle, for the comments on your contract and also for the feedback on the flexible instruction days. Anybody from the board want to ask a question or discuss items? Mrs. Stone?
I use my, raise my hand. Um, I just once, I've been following Dr. Mingle, your community updates and the updates that the board get. And I'm really impressed, and I just want to take a moment to say how impressed I am at the level of effort that we're seeing from all of the staff and the administration. Just your list of committees that are addressing the possible programs and opportunities we can offer to students if we return before the end of what would be the end of our school year is a tremendous undertaking, and, and, you know, I hope that appreciation is making its way to all of the staff.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Stone. Mr. Franco?
Yeah, so as Dr. Mingle knows, I've been, I've been pushing behind the scenes a little bit for more interactivity with particularly my son. And I would like to say that this morning, we had a, or his first synchronous team meeting in the morning, and I thought that that went really well. It was a very good use of time just to get the kids together and with their teachers, and they can ask questions and talk to one another and just say hello. And I thought that was, and just outlined the course of the day, which I thought was extremely helpful, and of course, they were available again later in the day in a synchronous way to answer any questions from the other material. So I think that's, that's a really good movement from where we were, at least for, in my son's case, even as late as last week, so I'm very happy to see that. I still have some concerns about the Wednesday field trips. At least the last couple, I don't think have been very strong, but that's just my opinion. And I think there can be more done with, with that if you're taking the teachers away from them for, and then lessons away from the day, I think the field trips can be improved. That being said, on a separate topic, I would like to also just reiterate my comments to Dr. Mingle. We're happy to support you for the next five years of the, you know, for the strategic planning and, and have you with us. So you have my support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Franco. Mr. Breezy?
Yes, I somehow missed a very important update in the Finance Committee minutes, and thank you, because Dr. Mingle covered it. The, it was on the agenda as C eight, the supplemental after-school activities. That was on, also on the Finance Committee agenda that we spoke of, and I just wanted to absolutely give credit where credit is due, and that's to administration and to our staff and our teachers for coming up with that list. I saw the list today, and there were a couple that I kind of wish I was a student for, like half a dozen. So hopefully, everyone is able to find something, and that list continues to grow. I think it's important to note that those, hopefully, I'm not speaking on a turn. Dr. Mingle, please correct me if I am. Those are across all schools. It's not limited to just one school as, as some of our after-school clubs and activities used to be when we were restricted by having to go to school versus doing it virtually. So I think that's certainly an instance of making the best of what we can do, given the circumstances. So thank you again for that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Breezy. Any other board member? Otherwise, I want to share my thoughts. Yes, thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. The administrations were working very hard. I have seen some teachers working really hard, providing great lessons to students. The interactive component is great for the kids to see each other, to see the teacher, to talk to each other. Very well received in our family. I echo Mr. Franco's feedback on the field trips. I'm not the biggest fan of them. I understand that teachers need to have their training and that we have to do something there, but I wish for a little bit more individualized learning during these field trips. And my big concern is that after, we are coming back, whenever this is back, that there might be an increased academic gap between our students, and there is a significant challenge on our staff, teachers, administration to bridge that and to ensure that all students are on the same level and have not lost anything in these weeks of remote learning. Otherwise, I'm really happy that we committed to the contract for five years and that we are working together through this and that the teachers and administration is working so hard. Thank you very much. Any other board member before we are moving on to the public?
Christian?
Lisa, please. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Just two things. One, Dr. Mingle, thank you for the comment you wrote on one of the updates about giving everyone some perspective on what it's like to be a teacher at home with your children and trying to teach. And I have older children, thank goodness. I can only imagine if someone does, isn't potty trained and urine, I can only imagine. So just have patience because we didn't have a lot of prep time teachers for this. And so we're flying by the seat of our pants, and maybe it's more difficult for me because I'm a dinosaur. I've been teaching almost twenty years with all this technology, but I miss being with my students, and it definitely affects us, all of us. So just give us some time and we'll get better at it, but having never done this before, it's extremely challenging. So I want to make sure that I thanked you as a teacher for making that comment to make all board members aware of how challenging it is to be a teacher at home with your children, and possibly your significant other has a full-time job and is out of the home. Like, my husband is a central worker, and so I'm the one home by myself. And like I said, I have it pretty good because my kids are older. The second item was, I'm so glad I get to see you through another contract, seeing as though I hired you. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Was the only person left from the original board, and that was only four years ago.
Any other board member? I'll wait another thirty seconds. Moving on to public commentary, now on any topic, and especially on the flexible instruction days. Once again, there's a time limit of three minutes. Please use the raise your hand feature or write into the chat and state your name and address. Dr. Mingle, do you see any raise your hand feature usage?
No, there are no hands up yet. No comments in the chat.
I'll wait for another minute. As I can see that we have a large amount public in this meeting. Seeing no comment in the chat, Dr. Mingle, I assume there was nobody raising their hand. Thank you very much. Mrs. Stone, could you please?
Yes. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJ SA ten four dash eleven permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss the WTEA collective bargaining agreement and/or negotiations related to it, and specific prospective or current employees unless all who could be adversely affected request an open session, non-tenure, non-administrative staff review. Action will not be taken upon return to the public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately thirty minutes, and be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Will I have a second?
Christian Bowman, second.
If the board members only could please unmute themselves?
And it'll, it'll just take a minute to clear the room so that we can switch it to.
But I need to take a voice vote.
Oh, sorry. Yes, after the vote.
If the board members went unmute themselves? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The board is now going into exec. Thank you.
Good. It must be a minute, everybody, so. I have the ability to move people out of the room if I need to, but I think we actually got there. I need to stop the recording as well.